Because a deck is a lot simpler than an outbuilding.
I guess that sounds realistic.
As far as, it covers the safety issue anyway.
And I think seventy's small.
Yes.
You can't put a table on a seven, seventy square foot and not fall off. I mean, think about it.
Yeah.
Seven, seven feet, you put a four-foot table on it.
You can't walk around it.
No.
That, that means you got a foot and a half on either side.
Yeah.
You have somebody falling off and breaking their mallet.
On a balcony, you don't need a table so that's more than enough.
I could see the height of it stayed the same with no walls, no ceiling, make it one hundred and twenty.
Well, anytime it goes up thirty.
Inches.
Right.
But if it stays low and we've got one hundred and twenty on the low side, it wouldn't be.
Right.
That, that would work better for, we've got folks here saying, if we've got an ag building or a local chat or whatever, they can be one hundred and twenty without a permit. A deck that's not above thirty could be one hundred and twenty square feet. That's kind of what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
The height is what makes the difference.
The height is what makes it dangerous. It's not that you can't fall down on a flat surface.
So do you want to give it a seven feet? Do you say one hundred and twenty?
I do, or I, I think that would work if, that would work.
I want to make sure you clarify seventy feet though. I, I think it's not getting presented right. And if you had a four by eight piece of byway down, you had two of those, that's sixty four square feet. I just want to make sure that the seventy's getting in everybody's head right, rather than just seven feet.
Well, number two is at least one more horizontal depth dimension exceeds seven feet. So you can't lay down two. You're over a foot.
You're over a foot with one.
Yeah.
The four by eight, the eight and a half, but those, where you're, I'm not saying it's a problem, just.
Yeah, so.
Kim, for you, the definition as far as the size, I know you said seventies, and so what's kind of, you know, as this discussion's evolved, that seventy still, I mean, what was your heart beating for that?
Well, you know, it's, it's all about really trying to protect the town's interest.
Sure.
And if you, if you want to take that size up, you probably open that up a little bit more. If you leave it at seventy, you're, you're a little more covered on liability. But then again, you know, when does it become reasonable? So that's up to you guys. I just wanted to clarify, you know, some of the footage differences, square footage differences. You did a good job there.
Would seem like the one hundred and twenty reasonable because it's on the ground or less than four thirty sixes.
Thirty inches.
I have a ten by twelve and you can't put much on it.
And that's your one hundred and twenty.
And there's one hundred and twenty right there, so that's reasonable.
Yeah. Table and chairs and you're falling off the.
I mean, that, that seemed reasonable too as far as, thinking, thinking through a house building, one hundred and twenty. As long as the deck doesn't see the height.
So we're looking to change the number one to one hundred and twenty and get rid of the seven foot.
I'm just, voice of mine.
Is that what I'm hearing? Yes.
And now that the document's good.
Who, who's, uh, whose motion was it?
John made the motion and Stephanie seconded. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does your motion still stand?
My motion still stands.
Does that get them?
The seconded.
Okay, still stands.
Your motion is seconded and we've had discussion. Any last discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, three, four, the motion passes.
I don't need the town to say.
One hundred and twenty square feet it is. Number six, planning department reports violations unfortunate. We'll turn it back to Eric.
Okay. We had a few things going on. Let's get this out of the way. Now we just went off of decks. You guys will love this. We got a permit this week that we had to go inspect. And if you live in Heber, this is required. It's not required in the town of Daniel, but somebody requested it, so we did that.
Oh, wow.
For a watered Heber. If you live in Heber, you have to get a permit, but in a watered.
I have heard that.
Wow.
To replace one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Serious?
Yep.
What, why?
It has plumbing.
Because you're dealing with both plumbing, with both electrical and plumbing and possibly gas. So if you mess with that, they want you to, to permit to do that, it's not right.
It's kind of, kind of weird, huh? So we accommodated, then we discharged the inspection fee, is that correct, Ryan?
That's correct. What was the fee?
Five hundred dollars. I didn't understand.
I think we estimated it.
The common numbers.
Because you got an inspector going out now, and now, of course, they have to go pull the permit, so now we have, we have office staff doing the permit. So yeah, it starts adding up, so now that we've discussed the deck, that's.
Don't make that water.
That's kind of weird, huh? That is not a throw that in. It's just information. Okay, here's, here's the planning report. How'd you learn something? You have, you call emergency. Oh, right. You're gonna talk about that right now. Oh, good. Do emails need a copy? I have two. Sure, what is it? This is the planning report, what's been, we've been doing in the town. Bells, you good?
Last month you had a little more time with your family. You only had forty-nine hours of Blue State.
Yeah, we're down on the Blue State.
You had five hundred hours.
People kept waiting for winter and I guess they found it. So as you go down through that, you can see what we've been doing.
Can you, uh, on mixed net powering, so I've heard, over the last few years, I've heard they were, were, were going to, can you explain that a little bit for me?
In net metering?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as now, what the latest is and what Nick did.
Okay, so they put in a solar panel and what we do is we require them to get, uh, Heber Power and Light, or whoever provides their power, they have to sign off on that. So that, and so there's an inspection on that, we, we issue a permit, and then once they sign off on that, we go out and do our inspection. We've caught, I don't know how many, but several that were, were a problem.
And.
When our inspector went out, that was hooked up wrong.
And Heber Light Power have always, or do they just change it back as far as their net metering? Because it was, didn't they accept it and then they wouldn't accept it, and then now they accepted it again as far as individuals doing it?
No, they, they accepted it, but then the rules changed, and so they're not getting paid as much as they used to.
Oh, okay.
And so they went through that transition, but they, they, they've always accepted the net metering. And the reason why is that they get the green credits off of that, so he signed those over too. So it's a good thing for them where they have diesel generators in town, very good, quite lose credit, so that helps a bunch on that.
I know during the summer, so I get those for about twelve dollars and something. What it is, is nothing for electrical power and it's.
Customer service fee.
Customer service fee and then tax.
Yeah, they patterned that after the gas company did the same thing. You have a customer service charge, so.
Yep.
How about, and anyone can speak on it a little bit, how the Blair LeBert, Leibert or whatever?
Well, we had, we had a, uh, this, these people called in and wanted to use a lot that's being built on right now as a business. And so they, they had called and investigated, uh, setting up a dog kennel on some property back there that, uh, abuts the industrial zone on the backside. So, of course, the house isn't built yet, so we didn't receive an application. It was just an inquiry. Any other questions? Everybody happy?
What's the church requirement in Daniel?
Uh, we had Chad Spencer called and was checking into requirements to build a church in, in the town of Daniel. And in the town of Daniel, any church is a conditional use within the zones we have, and so a church will fall under a conditional use anywhere in the town. So they were looking at what was required in the town.
And I believe they're not looking at the moment again. There's been a little change, or they?
We haven't had a second follow-up.
They ended up switching out the consultants that they were using.
That's right, yeah, they're just changing the property back, but they.
What about the Heber City impact fee? I saw that they have a meeting on that. Did, did anybody go to that?
No, I, I, I found some things in there. Kim pointed out some other things in there, and then I was, uh, I was invited not to go. So I, so I respected the boundaries and I didn't go, but we did point out they had some wells that were claimed that were from the town, residents of the town, they had claimed some water. So that person that uninvited me brought that up and that was, that was, they said that was a mistake. So they, they did have some things in there. Um, there's some things that will affect the town and their impact analysis and the, but. Well, it was, that was the thing. Do I show up there and show them what's wrong with it, or do I let them do their analysis and get their impact fee set up? And then when they come to do those things and then suddenly it's not in Heber City, that's when I tell them it's not in Heber City. So apparently that's the direction we've been invited to take.
And oftentimes between now and then, there's a lot of whittles and waggles that never.
What do you have there? Oh, that's Todd Wall. He's here tonight. We had, uh, we had issued a stop work order on his house and, uh, we didn't follow up with that, and so when we brought that to his attention, he was surprised. And we're on track to get everything fixed up and moving forward with that. You remember, uh, last month, we sent his application back, and so we are working towards a resolve on that.
Good. The zone change for Summit Engineering on Highway forty?
We've, yeah, I had a meeting with Summit Engineering and they're looking at, uh, purchasing some property on Highway forty, for a joint Highway forty, and, uh, looking at, uh, possibly putting in a zone change. So it was just a preliminary meeting to have an app, we don't have an application, but. So that's what that is there at the bottom.
County regional water study.
The county regional water study is, the county called all the mayors and some other folks together, and Chip took me. Yeah. Close to Ryan, hear me. So they're trying to figure out if it's worth our time to take the valleywide regional area and make, so we don't have an overlap of services, or we have more of a cooperation between agencies and municipalities, and make the resources so that they're harder to be attached from outside the valley. And so that's what they're looking at, is do, are we interested in doing a study? The number's thrown around with three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the study. Um, they are setting up a committee to look at it and do preliminary to see what items we want to look at, and then they'll come back and find out if we want to move forward with that, and who wants to participate in that, in that study.
What were they trying to prevent, again?
The water, trying to secure the water within the valley. So really it will be, if it's used within the valley and tied into different agencies, we're able to protect it a little bit better than. I think some of the irrigation companies got their eyes opened that their water is not secure, and it can be filed upon.
And then next, and the next thing is they want to see how many times they can reuse the treatment water out of the treatment system. So not, now it's not just the canal, they may be using that water in all sorts of applications because they can double or triple that same water volume. So it's not just irrigation shares and just things, they, they're, they're going to look at it all, and that's, in my opinion, probably a stronger direction they're trying to go. Kim?
They also talked about the population growth and what they expect, and I mean, they're, they're talking eighty thousand people.
Twenty sixty or fifty? Was it twenty sixty, fifty?
Twenty six, five, I thought.
Sixty's, I think. It's a lot.
But it, it's a lot of people.
It's a lot of people.
But they also talked about certain situations where they, they had a fire. They didn't have the fire flow in this one particular system, which is, was a municipality, but they were able to go across and cross connect it to the other one and make it work. So they're, they're trying to get some coordination between, uh, cities, county, irrigation companies, municipalities like Daniel. That's always been a tough one because everybody's operated so independently in the past. And now they're trying to say, with this big population coming, we want to be able to keep the amount of water that we've had traditionally in the valley, and we want to be able to make it as useful as possible because of possible. So it's an effort to try and get more coordination between all of them.
So anybody that had been involved with that prior, those that's been met with resistance prior, so.
Like us doing with the February mission.
Well, all over, all over. Um, if you get a report that we don't take care of our folks, this is a certificate of occupancy that was issued Saturday morning. I dare you to find another municipality that offers the Saturday morning certificate of occupancy. Excellent. The road wasn't quite done on Friday, and so that, we expected Saturday morning, and then Kim got that sent right out to them on Saturday morning, so.
It's not by Friday night. They were just weren't done yet.
They just weren't quite done yet, so. So the Three Farms Road is, is got the chip, chip on it, and we issued that certificate of occupancy. Um, there is one more thing I'd like, and I don't know if we need to put this on the agenda for next time. Mike Ashby, he had pulled a permit for, uh, communication tower in emergency situations. Uh, we used quite a bit of that money up. The fee was five hundred dollars. The bill that was billed from Epic Engineering was three hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-five. That leaves a remainder of a hundred and seventy-two, seventy-five. I think that, that based on what he's using this for and how the town and the area residents will definitely benefit from him having this.
Starting to ham, it's town.
Ham radio, yeah, his towers, that, um, that I would think that the town would want to return his leftover fees, and that happened in two thousand and twelve, so we're in our fifth year now of a hundred and seventy-two, seventy-five.
No problem returning it to him.
So I only thought, I think we held on to that because he hadn't built, he had applied for three towers and he had only built.
Correct.
One, and so part of that was we were going, are all three built? I can't remember.
I just.
I just remember two thousand and twelve, sorry.
No, he hasn't built them.
Okay, so I guess the only reason I would, or only, I would be if there's another inspection still left to do on the third tower.
Yeah.
But I don't disagree with the sentiment at all.
That's just one of the ones. I mean, that was, that's such a benefit to the community.
Absolutely.
Having that, that radio available in, in an emergency.
Being recognized by the state and the county in that same position as far as using that radio, I agree.
Yeah, definitely benefit to the resident, so I don't know if we have to put that on an agenda item or.
It's part of the agenda, just bigger official.
Okay, so we need that on the agenda next month? And then, uh, Kim pointed out a couple of things regarding, uh, the new law, Kimberly. Our legislature's back at it again. So, um, they've added a municipal officer or official who is not a law enforcement officer in accordance with section fifty-three, and for a violation as a misdemeanor, you now have to have the law enforcement officer issue the citation. So no longer can a town official go issue a citation.
To building code violation?
Building code violation.
Real sheriff.
It has, well, it has to be allowed. It goes through, uh, two pages of who is a law enforcement officer. And then, of course, they lowered the fines, none. So, so ten thousand dollars for a felony conviction, first and second degree. Five thousand for a felony conviction of a third degree, twenty-five hundred for a class A misdemeanor. And so we have misdemeanors in the town that are violations unless they do.
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred for a class A, one thousand for a class B, and seven hundred and fifty for a class C. And that's also for an infraction.
And so that class C, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, if you've got a dog and you're out in anybody else's territory of the town of Daniel, and then you get picked up, it's going to cost you that much. You're going to get the dog fee, the penalty fee, and then that fee for the courts. So that's why we have not got involved in the animal control, us and a few other municipalities, because of some of these kind of things that, uh, my dog liked your dog and we didn't care, and my dog went to your house, they grabbed him, that's what I'd have to pay, and I think that's just how it is.
And you will be booked into jail for all of them.
Do you need a second on that? I didn't even, they didn't get fired up for a first.
Yeah, and it is coming around again. They're looking at approaching the municipalities again.
All to handle in the west.
And then, and then the animal control services.
I did get a call from the pause for like gal, and I kind of told her, maybe some of my views and what our previous views had, and she never called back.
Really? Well, they just don't get it. I mean, we really don't care if somebody has a rooster. In Heber City, it's against the code, but we really don't care, so.
Prefer it.
It just doesn't, it's not, it's not one size fits all, unfortunately.
And they, and just for the, for the record, the county, and they did look about a year or so ago, we had a meeting to see if, I mean, it's either all or nothing. They couldn't take care of our needs because we have different needs, and they couldn't take care of Heber City's needs, they just have one form fix all and it doesn't fit us.
We got that finally resolved. He's just asking me about why I actually got cited for that. Actually, Shelley did. We got it resolved. It, uh, they dropped it, but.
And what?
Twenty-eight hundred dollars.
So we see less dogs in the town of Daniel too.
So, yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's enough, isn't it?
Uh, yeah. Okay, Kim, this is kind of for you. I don't know how many copies we have of this, but we did have, uh, the answers to your questions and a new document that has been signed, sealed, delivered, that we can start sending to our clients at addresses, everything I think that you want to be addressed, and maybe some more. I don't know about going through this this evening. This was not on the agenda as well. Um, you need to see that or have it.
Done.
Okay.
Mayor, the only suggestion I've got to this is, if it's possible, I'd like to see all this on a front page and a back page. Then you never lose the back page.
Oh. What, you mean when it goes out or?
That should be easy enough.
And that's the one that you'll have, uh, for Daniel Municipal, separate form for.
Starting heading out.
Water. Depending on where they land.
But saying, kind of the same thing, just to.
Yes.
So, um.
Was it something we said?
I think it's just that this is the document we're going to be using. I don't think we need to. Do anything more than that. We already have two.
Yeah.
Think we should?
Uh, no, no, I, I, I mean, we're, you want to get into it tonight, or you just want to continue until next month?
I just want to continue next month as far as getting, getting into it, but this will be it, and then read it, and we'll either adopt it, I think we adopted it, it's pretty dark. They even did add a few other things we needed and it's done.
Well, between the resolutions and ordinances, which, I mean, I've lost my life. A lot of that legality gets covered in the resolution ordinance, and it ties into this, or it should, so.
And it should, and now this is the document, and so, I mean, they can look at this and get answered, but they want to dig deeper, they can, but now at least this says what, everything they need to say, or you'll be able to read it.
And then the only other one is the turnoff notice. Do we have a standard form on there? I have, I have what I think is the standard. I didn't bring it.
Well, we, we, for a couple of years, we did the August and April kind of turn off and turn on.
That's the one.
And I, they're, you know, it's been done. We've turned waters off and we've turned waters on the last few years. I, I know we passed it and moved forward on, on those two timeframes, giving the folks time to catch up, not catch up and things.
Yeah, I think everything's fine with those two yards.
Okay. With that, then I'll go officially into, into Daniel Municipal water issues if there's any to the municipal side.
I don't know of any. Uh, Ryan might have something there on the water test.
Water tests came back clean today.
Far as I know, all our tests are, are looking good.
Excellent.
We'll hope that trend continues.
Okay, how about, uh, as far as storm haven? Run number I, I made?
No, I think, I think we're fine there. I've got the tree and then we move.
So tell me a little bit about that. I mean, I know I have a few comments for this side, you know, on both sides as far as us and the town and liability, and I, I know we got it done and it's finished. Where was the line, and at the end of the day, did we need to take that tree out?
We haven't.
I know we did.
We haven't done anything with the water line. It's still got a leak in it. It goes into the box. It's a small leak. And, uh, we've had a contractor up and looked at that, and he, he's going to give the information, ask on the costs and a few things. But, uh, the tree is out. That's a good thing, because I'm pretty sure we're going to have to dig underneath that, that root ball now. And I thought it was really quite a hazard, a liability, if, if that ground gets saturated and the trees push the ball and go through the house.
And are we going to move the setter or the meter out to where it should be after we're done?
We're going to do what's the cheapest. If we can find the leak right by the existing meter box, we're going to leave it there. If, if the leak seems to go towards the street more, then we'll move the meter box.
Council have any sway with it? I mean, that sounds logical, and it should be in our right of way. How much, you know, the difference of dollar between ours and his, in my understanding, that, you know, it's X amount of feet into his property line, and the trees are out, out here, so, and the meter's here, and now the tree's gone. We may or may not want to bring it back out into our, uh, our, we need right of way.
Well, I could, I could use some direction from you guys, whatever you'd like to do. It'll probably be another twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars to move the box and put it closer to the street. Everybody else's box is in fact in the property.
Okay, so that's not, if that's not, everybody else's is that way?
Yeah, pretty much.
But that, most of them are out.
And then again, I don't know how, if crazy acres, street or road is ever going to widen because of one reason or another, it'd be terrible to have to move it back.
There we go.
Well, that's.
No, it would be terrible though.
Yeah, it would.
If someone knows that our road might change, because somebody wouldn't want to be putting a bunch out there and having it changed.
Well, you got a whole ditch on that side. There's a lot of frontage on that side. It's not like the street is close to the, right, close to the fence line.
What would you prefer, Eric?
I prefer to get it out of the front yards. Yeah, because it typically.
Each time.
Each time you mess with one.
Right.
Because you, you're still liable to the meter. I mean, that's how. That's what we want to be. Otherwise, somebody hooks in before the meter. Well, what I'm saying, the shorter your distance is, the less pipe you have to maintain. Yeah. Well, and if it was out, this tree wouldn't have been issue, wouldn't have been a town issue, so.
So the town paid for having the tree removed already?
Oh, let me check.
It's probably the worst. It hasn't paid yet.
Haven't paid yet.
So we've gone to the bother of spending the money to move, remove the tree, might as well put the meter where it needs to be.
And that's kind of my thinking, and that's kind of just trying to see if, I mean, is it all that way down there, then, like Eric said, I mean, each time we fix it, we got to bring it back to where it's supposed to be. What, what would you think the reason why all of those particular ones are out, or is the whole, is all the storm havens on their problem?
Well, that's just the way.
Okay, that street.
That's just the way it was put in. One service at a time. But now, if you want to talk about town money, I'd love to talk about that. But the tree removal, there was four pieces of equipment up there. There was a crane, there was a shredder or a chopper, and I mean, that thing can chop eight-inch trees. It was just amazing. Then they had another little outfit that had a tongue on it like this, four-wheel drive. What am I missing? There was one more. Anyway, to me, there was like five hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment. You had five guys. They started at eight-thirty and they, uh, three of them left at noon and two more stayed on for another hour. And, you know, I'm sitting there just thinking, this ought to be three thousand dollars. I mean, it didn't make any sense to me.
Well, and when I was hearing about it.
It cost nine hundred and fifty dollars. Now, is that a winter, a winter raid? I don't know, but I can tell you. I don't know. But I can tell you right now, that was a big savings. However, we had another bid. It was around a thousand fifty. But I don't know how these guys keep taking trees down and making money. I really don't.
We better keep them on file.
I don't think most of them ought to be that cheap.
Now, back to the meter box. You dig down on the existing meter and there's the leak. It's two feet out on our site. You fix it, cover it up, the bill's seven hundred and fifty bucks. Or you go ahead and extend it out, put the meter in, and whatever direction the town council would like to take, that's fine to me. You know, but you, you just kinda naturally look at the, at the less expensive way to begin. The thing I don't like about moving the meter box, too, is you splice into the homeowner's line. Well, he gets a leak a year later and it's the connection that you made. Are you responsible then or not responsible?
I feel like I'd be responsible. Are you still responsible to the meter? We should put a meter just outside of the well.
So from your, from your aspect, Ryan, as far as all those meters and...
I see Kim's point about trying to save money and if we find a leak two feet out. If the leak is a fitting, I think I agree. My concern, if we find a leak two feet off, is that it's probably the galvanize pipe and electrolysis.
You're gonna have to continue.
And so we fix the problem two feet out and three feet back from that is another one that's gonna break and a leak.
And I agree with that decision.
And if that's the case, then I'd say we just go ahead and do the whole adro.
And I agree with that decision, but you, you think you know what you got, but still you dig it out.
And how many feet, in this particular one, how many feet would it be from where it is to put it back to?
Thirty feet.
The problem with that logic, Kim, is we get back to the main and the main's not in any better shape. So we turn the corner and all of a sudden we're finding ourselves, you know, three thousand feet back.
Second house from the end, so there's a good spark to start and replace.
So, but, but I would say if it's the pipe that's bad, I would suggest we probably wanna replace the whole pipe, but we don't know that, obviously.
And we don't. And I don't know that we'll have to dig that whole way. If we'll have to dig through the root ball, if we'll be able to hook on and pull it through. I don't know. So if it's saturated, it may pull right through. I'd be able to hook on and just pull it right through and then expose the, on the outside when we see the main.
If we move, if we do end up digging the whole trench out, is it, do you think it's still that much more to move the meter box? Or is it about a wash then, about where we put the, put the cam back in the holes?
But I mean, I think, I think we leave it up to you. If you find that leak in this part and you can fix it, do it. I mean, there's no reason to, but if we start, like you're saying, if you start getting back there five or six feet, you'll be into the root ball and...
I mean, you've been making the call and all these kinda things before and within reason and if it's some big thing that turns into something, obviously we'll talk and not you'll...
You're smart, though. You figure it out.
I like all this. I haven't lost that.
I wish there was only one direction to be easy.
Whatever decision you make, somebody else can guess it. Don't worry.
Yeah. You have to sleep at night.
I don't have any other issues on either one of those systems.
Okay, so eight, so we took care of the tree. We talked about the tree removal and you got B there that you'll be able to look at tonight and...
Yeah, we're okay there.
It takes a long time. Thirty-five dollars a month to get your money back.
Okay, we are on number nine. Approval of council meeting minutes for January eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And did the council have time to read and or check the minutes? Thanks, you guys.
So I did have one thing on there about the math work and that's on a... Cutting the, measuring the... Yeah.
Page?
On page three. Yeah. Mayor Turner asked about police action and parking issues on the trailer park on the corner of Daniel Road, three thousand south.
Okay, I got that. Okay, now may I turn and ask?
So I don't know. I don't know that it could state there's a bathroom or bus station. I heard there was one there. So I don't have very much.
We can change that.
I would just heard. The council member, you found her, heard.
Okay. Absolutely. I think there's part of the discussion about different ways.
Stated he heard.
Okay.
I don't have any, I don't have any evidence of one other than the houses tore apart and the houses kicked in.
We will actually get a report.
Yes, yeah. Until I see that report, though, we can't state it.
Totally agree. Okay, motion to approve? We have a motion to approve the minutes for January eighth. We have a second.
I make a motion. Was there a motion?
Yep. Eric, may I ask? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the council meeting minutes of January eighth. Any, any last discussion? All of favor? Aye. Any opposed? So motion passes and meeting starts. And we'll turn the time over to Mary and Recorder's Office, Warren, Google's announcements and et cetera. Let me get my marks. Good luck, Mary. There you go. Somewhere here.
Okay, so there's the bond reimbursement for land with postage. There's the rent for January and February, because we have January's on for last month. So we pay two months' rent this time.
It's already doubled.
That's great, though. She wrote that contract.
Central Utah Record Association, those are membership dues for recorder. And then there's a few different purchases for the office purchases. Lees for banner flowers.
That was from Mike Peterson's.
Wasatch wave was for public post. Comcast there is a one-month charge on there. Plus, they charged eighty-dollar for installation, one time fee. Heber Light Power. I'm gonna let Lynn tell you about that one.
I received an invoice that just said labor for streetlight repair.
Again?
No.
Oh.
The last one was an install. This is a repair.
Yes.
Oh.
For a hundred and fourteen dollars and cents. So I called to see what it was and the gal there at the office said they used to do this on a quarterly basis many years ago. The light company paid for that one. Well, it's for repair of the streetlights throughout the valley, the town, you know, or whichever city you live in. And I, so I said, what lights? I mean, we talked about that at the last meeting. How many streetlights does Daniel have? Like four? So she said, I have a map that shows the lights. I said, send it to me. She did. Twenty-nine lights. So Jack and I, in our very scientific way, waited till dark, went in the car and drove around to all the spots that supposedly had a light. We came up with...
You were the couple parked under that light.
That was a good one, thanks.
We came up with ten. So I called her back and I told her, can I come in and discuss this with you? And so I went in and showed her my map. No light here, here, here. One of them was in front of Brian's house that they disconnected three years ago and it was their personal one. Other ones, we felt like were in yards, not, you know, not town lights. A lot of poles where they showed there was a light, not only was there not a light illuminated, we couldn't even tell that there was a light on the pole. So... You know, I said, she, we decided it was such a minimal amount. We'll pay it this time. If you're gonna do this, we need to know when, where, what was wrong.
Thank you.
And so we'll see if they do this again, either on an annual basis or when.
Did you go in Tammy Lane and storm haven?
They only had one on Tammy Lane and that was it. Right. They didn't have any other shown there.
Was it your rental?
Yes.
No, it's my house. It, it's off and I sure hope it stays that way. Took me about a year to get them to shut it off. Please keep it that way.
Does anybody know that Mike basically had three thousand by his house? Is that a street light or that is his light?
That is his light. He had it. And he pays it there.
See, I've been, I've been after him for a year and a half to fix mine. Still...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong.
You want me to call? It's right on the street.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's right on the street and I have been after them and after them. And when they came here to do their update, I almost brought it up and then I thought I better not.
Well, and then Pam had mentioned that they're thinking about dissolving their HOA on Ranch Drive. And so she had called Heber Light to disconnect those lights. In our same conversation, since I was in there, she said, Daniel won't have to pay the power for those, just like they don't anywhere else. That if Heber Light picks up the cost for those lights, you wanna leave them on. And so I asked Chip and he said, sure, as long as there's no cost, leave them on. Those guys said it's fine to leave them on. So there are two on Ranch Drive.
How many total again?
Twenty-nine.
But what did you count?
Oh, we came up with ten. At the intersection of Daniel's Road and three thousand south, they had three shown on their map and there's only one. And a couple other spots, they had two or three.
Remember down there at the end of Little Sweden, there was three or something?
Yeah, and the only lights were right on Highway forty. They showed three down there. There was nothing on the west side of the highway. Everything that we saw, it was in connection with the port on the other side.
On ramp from the port.
So anyway...
Correct me if I'm wrong. Whenever a street connects to another joining street, shouldn't there be a light there?
Yep, you're wrong. You said point and then.
Okay. I think, what, is it wherever we want one as a town and designate one to get it?
You got it to fund, so I'll put it in.
Yeah, and then it's more expensive than you think.
Well, that little one up there, the three thousand was...
Yeah. So anyway, that's what that is and the consensus seemed to be to go ahead and pay it and we'll see what the future holds.
Yeah, really underdog.
So you pointed out the lack of lights?
Yes, you can believe it. She said, I don't know where they got this because she thought the map was only like two years old.
Did, did you guys count my light? It wasn't on, but...
I don't recall it that one. I don't recall it was shown, but I can look at the map.
Maybe that's why they don't fix it. They don't want it there.
Now, can I give you some options, Bill?
Okay, Utah League of City and Towns, there was three people with training and literature, which were the books that we brought you guys back from training.
Thank you.
Utah Local Government Trust, there was a recent increase on the work comp audit. And then...
There was a R increase?
Yeah, can we increase the wages?
Additional increase in premiums, yes.
Our percentage went up?
We, no. We do a guesstimate, like for the future, on those to figure, for them to figure the premium. And we usually get, have gotten money back. But since we gave town officials an increase in salary and the water people have been putting in more money, salaries went up. They conducted an audit. It's the first one since I came in in fourteen. And it came up with more, more monies involved and so that's an additional premium. We won't get any refunds.
And I, for, on a personal level, I get it every year, so I imagine I can do it to the town every year.
They did it to me for my business. Till I was clean for three years and they couldn't find anything, then they quit coming up. As long as they can dig something up, though.
Very routine.
Okay, so Smith and Harvickson, the GDA, did you have a chance? Oh, you didn't get those. Did you wanna look at them?
Do I wanna look at them? Yeah, I do wanna look at them, but...
I thought I'm looking.
Oh, no, I don't need to look at them right now.
And that is four or five subjects. I mean, that, that, at least that's the timeframe for that.
On Smith, Mark, speak?
Yeah, you'll see.
Okay, she jumped the GDA.
Is he multiple issues there? Hey, so Smith, Harvickson there. Now, go ahead.
It is several issues on that one, on seventeen. I was gonna ask whether that's covered.
There are issues on it?
Not issues. There's, there's more than one subject matter on that.
That they agreed with for that. I was curious on the top wall, two-hundred-and-forty-dollar permit because we sent this check back last time. Is that billed correctly is my question.
I guess I'll explain what I did, what we did and why, and I'll defer to the council and other or not, that's what we wanna do. So what we've been doing and what I've done for years is that we have the town planning. And so when applicants call for the, I think I might wanna build, how, how can you help me? That's where those things go along with other conversations with Eric and some, I'd say, general stuff. But it's either too small to break out or just, you know, really quick things here or there. And then as soon as an application comes in, we get it, it gets its own job number. And I move as much of the time out of that general planning as I can to that. So if an applicant comes in and says, I think I wanna build a house and they come back a week later with a set of plans, I'll go back and take that time and move it over to that job. So as soon as a job comes in, it gets its own job number and it gets its own invoice. So in the case of top wall, he came in, he filed an excavation permit, he dropped off a check, we set up a job number and we started billing to it. Because of some red tag issues and other remaining issues, you know, other, other long histories, instead of accepting and approving that application, we worked with Eric and the council and decided that it was best to return that. And so after we accrued those costs and gone out to the site and issued a red tag and done these other things, we decided that the best thing to do would be to hand the application back and say, we're not gonna accept this at this time. We'd already set up a job number. We'd already incurred those costs. And so I left it on its own job number with its own bill. My theory is that the more we can break this out, the more we can keep the invoices on the explicit projects, the better, the easier it is for me to track when I do, are year-end, are we, are our permit fees right? And so to me, it made sense to leave it broken out. But it's a great question.
So if, if he comes back and resubmits the application when he has his red tag issues going out, you won't rebuild for the same things that you did before?
Correct. But by keeping this separate, that would give us the ability because most of the permits are plus costs.
Yes.
And so this way I know that there's a two-hundred-and-forty-dollar plus cost to factor in. If we put it back in the general planning, it gets lost very quickly. It's a great question and I, I'm open to other ways to do it, but that's, that's what happened and why we are where we are.
Are you gonna draft it? So, go ahead.
Okay, Public Works, there was the Wasatch County road signs, which we've seen the change last week or last month. There's the snow removal, the Zorro, which is pavement patch. Eric, did you have a specific job that that was for?
I do. And so I picked up some, I haven't picked it up. It's on order. I have some patch for, like dry patch or... Yeah, cold patch. Yeah. And so it will be for the corner of Daniel Road and three thousand south.
For both sides or just the one?
For both.
There you go. Good.
I wrote to, I wrote to a meeting with the mayor. He pointed out what it is.
And we both have received complaints probably from similar individuals.
So they have a new, anyway, they have a new product out that comes in a bag. I just ordered it, come in. The reason that we got four bags was because if you spend over fifty dollars, free shipping. Otherwise, you spend fifty dollars for shipping. So we got it expensed.
Probably a few more that we might be able to use.
Yes.
Good thinking. Go ahead.
Okay, Eric's Blue State Towers and then the GDA invoice and then the payrolls. Daniel Municipal Water, there's the Century Link bill, Heber Power. There's staples for envelopes, Chemtech Ford and another GDA.
You're on. Oh, good question on the municipal with GDAs. Is that seven-twenty-seven? Is that a couple of months' worth or is that, do we have some bigger test, this particular series?
It's, it worked out to be two months. And it's actually, all, all of these worked out to be a month and a half. So with the holiday, we built December before the end of December and so our December invoices only had about two and a half, three weeks in them. And so this January actually had... And so this January actually has the other half of December in it and so we captured two water sampling events.
And I remember the last one being smaller, that's why I did.
So, so yeah, we, this is kind of a month and a half because of holidays. So, and that, that holds true for all of them because they are a little bit bigger this month, they were a little bit smaller last month.
Okay.
Okay, Storm Haven Water, there's the Dominion Energy, Heber Power, GDA for sampling,